All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Alum.
Yes.
Odie. Comper. Saxer. Yes. Telkot. Yes.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agendas presented tonight, please.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Conflict of interest disclosure, waiver requests, there are none this evening, so that takes us to our approval of the minutes from the regular board meetings on February 10th and February 24th. If there are any questions or concerns, I would entertain a motion to approve those sets of minutes, please.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Community input, I don't believe there is any of that tonight. That takes us to the financial items. Mr. Lombard.
Okay, any specific questions on the bills and claims submitted with the agenda? Many of the board members, I think I had a couple noted. Page three, our quarterly payment, T-12, this is our fourth installment to T-12 for $183,000. For all the programs that we participate there. And I'm pretty sure I had another. Page 10, School Bus Inc., you'll notice that we did have to charter some school buses for middle school activities. This is just due to a lack of drivers in our district. $6,400 itemization of the pay voucher, or advanced payments is listed. $62,649 of pay vouchers, substitute teaching and bus driving. Majority. $128,789 of food service bills.
If there are no questions for Mr. Lombard on any of the bills and claims, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lombard.
You've got on the cash report for the month of February, $23,492,000 coming into the month, just under $2.5 million of receipts. $3.5 million expenditures, left $22,476,000 at the end of February. $4.5 million was in the general fund, $1.1 million in the capital outlay fund, $227,000 in the special education fund, $54,000 in the pension fund, $32,000 in the bond fund, $76,500 in the enterprise fund, and $16.4 million in the capital projects fund. The $2.5 million is itemized in the next two pages. Detailed itemization. The investment report of $17,092,000, $1 million in CD at First National Bank, and then $16, 092,000 in U.S. Treasuries. Which after today, the U.S. Treasuries are yielding a lot lower than they are in this report. I look like a genius right now. Payroll and benefits summary, just a little over $2 million with our payroll, and the associated deductions and benefits, $1.2 million. Financial statements themselves, the first two pages are the revenue report, we're through 67% through the fiscal year. They don't have anything noted on the revenue side of things right now. Pretty much running in line with last year's numbers on all the funds. The expenditure side of things, the first page is the general fund, as I've been reporting all year, and we're showing 66.8% year-to-date expended versus 66.01% as of the same time last year. We ended up last year at 99.5%, so this is looking at, right at 100% or a little stronger. We may have to supplement the general fund budget. I'm looking at about a $60,000 supplement right now. In the expenditure side, we just have a lot of expenses that are coming in over budget. Building repairs is one line item, about $30,000. Bus repairs is another line item, $20,000. And RVE substitutes is another line item, about $10,000. That's where I'm coming up with $60,000 at this point. We'll see when we get closer to the end of the year, but... Looking like that. Capital outlay fund, relatively the same as last year. Special education fund is 66.7% expended this year versus 65.3% last year. It's another one that are out-of-district placements, are running at an accelerated rate above our budget right now. If I had to guess right now versus the end of the year, I'm thinking that we'd probably have to have a supplement of about the same amount, $60,000 to $65,000 in the special education fund also. Food service is showing a net loss of $14,667. This is projecting out, I'm projecting that out at year-end, of a profit of about $40,000 I'm projecting out in the food service fund. At year-end. Trust agency fund had $184,000 in it, the amount's held for others. And finally, the capital projects, financial statement is the last thing there. This reflects all of the changes that Dr. Larson had in the agenda, that you'll approve later on in agenda, so the budget line items reflect all of those changes. Any questions on any of the reports?
Hearing no questions for Mr. Lombard, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented tonight.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Lombard. Next, we go to general business and administration reports. Administrative Center Superintendent Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few items, maybe a few more items than normal, to report to you here this evening. Legislative update, obviously, the legislative session is coming to a close. Would note that here, this afternoon, earlier this afternoon, there was a press briefing where Governor Noem, in conjunction with some Senate leadership, announced that they have arranged or aligned for a 2% increase to education funding. So we certainly appreciate all the work and efforts that the legislative process has gone through, and we certainly appreciate the 2%, assuming that that comes to fruition. General fund and capital outlay were obviously the priorities of the large school group. Would note that there is a capital outlay bill still working through the legislative process, has really minimal impact on the Brandon Valley School District, but has substantial impact on some districts within the large school group. So, just an item to note. Overall, if we have that 2% increase in general education funding, it's a successful year for public education. So, certainly appreciate their efforts on that, assuming that that comes true. Let me just comment that Ms. Saxer has declared candidacy for the Associated School Board's Executive Board position. Certainly will be reaching out to our southeast area schools and encouraging them to vote for Ms. Saxer, she would be a great voice for the kids of South Dakota in that role. Spoiler on entry, want everyone to note that, as we previously reported, Pesca Construction was the apparent labor, $14,675,000. We've gone through the value engineering process and have that for your approval here later in the Board of Education meeting. Proud of all of the work done by our administrative team, Building and Grounds Board members, and also our architect, working collaboratively with Pesca, getting that to under $14.2 million. So that was a nice job done there. Certainly we'll go through that a little later here in the Board of Education meeting. Timeline regarding opening and whatnot has not changed. We're eagerly anticipating that our weather holds and we're able to break ground in a week or two. That's maybe a little advantageous, but the sooner the better. Hopefully, we have a nice spring. Title I budget, as you have been made aware, our Title I budget was dramatically decreased because our U.S. Census poverty data has gone down, dipped below that 5% threshold. Ultimately, what we're looking at is a Title I allocation of $133,000 and change. That will support two Title I tutors. The staff reduction that is necessary is included within this board packet and will be acted on following formal action. Those individuals will receive their staff reduction formal notices, which is required in accordance to state law prior to April 15th. So that is an item to note. The United States Department of Education is sending Assistant Secretary Frank Brogan to Brandon Valley High School, who will be visiting us on Wednesday, March 18th, working with Principal Schleckaway. On that visit, we're going to include administrative staff, teaching staff, and students in that visit. Certainly look forward to having them on-site. Negotiations, again, you've been briefed on the timeline for the last few meetings, and what I would note is, Wednesday, we'll have our pre-negotiations meeting. Hopefully, we have all of our final numbers from the states, so we can start plugging those in as we prepare. And our Personnel Welfare Committee meeting is on March 17th. We'll meet collectively as a board and executive session to discuss negotiations at our March 23rd meeting, and we will have our first formal meeting with the BVA on March 25th. We'll look to ratify the master contract on April 14th, pending a successful first meeting. If not, we'll move forward later in April. Budget process is currently moving. We will have our preliminary capital outlay budget presented this evening, and again, we've talked about how that's necessary for those major items to be bid in a timely manner, and then pending those numbers dictates what items we can and can't do. So that'll be on the board docket for here a little bit later this evening. Preliminary budget presentation will occur in May, and we will have our public budget hearing and potential action in July. Two items on child nutrition services I want to note. Link's Lunch Express, for those of you that have been on the board over the last few years, you would recall that we've had conversations about a mobile feeding unit. We approved the creation of a mobile feeding unit. That is in process, so the bus is being outfitted with the generator, the air conditioning, those types of things. And the Link's Lunch Express ultimately will go to portions of our school district that are identified by census data to eligibility for summer lunch programs. And our hope is, is that in, over the course of the next few years, in the event that Brandon Elementary loses its eligibility based on census data, we will still have the eligibility with the Link's Lunch bus, and that revenue allows us to eliminate the cost for a reduced meal to our families. So that's a component of that. The other item I would note is, we're just in the process of reviewing an innovative programmatic grant opportunity with CNS Services. At this point in time, it surrounds shared services and the potential for additional staffing at no cost to the Brandon Valley School District. We're still vetting that grant opportunity and may have an actionable item here in the near future, and certainly more information prior to taking action. Good news reports, the intermediate school will be with us at our second meeting in March. Our elementarys will be with us at our second meeting in April. Update on the COVID-19, or the coronavirus, as it has been made known by our national media. Would note that staff, parents, community received an email, a general email regarding our preparedness and the importance of prevention approximately a week ago. I would note that we're in the process of preparing and disseminating memo for staff, just where we're at in our plan and what all of that entails. And then I would just note that we do have a pandemic response plan. That's, of course, only put into play if needed, but basically, it surrounds the importance to prevent the spread of disease, be prepared in the event that the disease occurs, mitigate issues, and then respond to issues in the event that it does become a pandemic threat. It's critical to note, the two strategies outlined within our plan, number one is reduce the spread, and then the second item is sustain educational functions and operations. We, of course, will abide by recommendations from the CDC and certainly that of the Department of Health. So that's just a brief update. Most important thing at this point in time for everyone to do is remain calm and certainly exercise those daily habits that are so important to reduce the likelihood of spreading disease, whether it be influenza A or B or COVID-19. Washing hands, 20 seconds with hot water on a regular basis, using antibacterial hand sanitizer that's alcohol-based, not touching your mouth, eyes, nose, and then if you're sick, stay home, please. So those just daily hygiene things are critical for us to do. It's important that, again, we don't overreact, but we take it as serious as we need to.
Do you want me to add the piece from the healthcare perspective?
Sure.
We just got a letter on Friday from our CMO, basically about just exactly what Superintendent Larson just said. How it's spread, we can't have the pet therapy come in the hospital anymore for a while because, you know, dogs, it's, I think that's overkill, but anyway. The bottom line is, do not wear masks out in public. If I have anything to tell people, it's, you're just going to cause mass hysteria. Thank you very little for that. You are, I am more worried as an emergency department provider, when people come in with a cough, I am probably still going to find out you either have influenza A, influenza B, or RSV. End of story. There have been no cases in South Dakota. I actually was on the phone last Wednesday with the State Department of Health because I'd gotten a random text, "How long does it take to get a result?" We didn't even, we didn't even have a lab set up at that time, so. Just on the news tonight, which might cause a little bit more panic, is there's two people in Huron that have been voluntarily quarantined because they just came back from a country, I'm not going to say it right, Marin Ma or something like that, but there are no confirmed cases over there, they're just being, you know, bottom line, cough into your sleeve. Wash your hands, but don't take your skin off because that just makes it worse. So just, you know, use common sense. I got an email from USF, I'm sure Augie's sending out the same thing. Bottom line is, everybody's going with what the CDC says, and it's not going to stop me from living a normal life. I'm going to go to the conference with Gay in Columbus, Ohio, because I'm fairly certain we're safe. But just know from the medical perspective that we're aware of it, we have our protocols in place, too. You probably won't see me working in a papper mask because I would be obtunded outside the room because of claustrophobia, so I just won't take care of anybody with a cough for a while. But just, I like everything that Superintendent Larson said, and we just need to relax. It's okay. It's new, and new things scare people, when in fact, influenza's been around for years, taking people away every single year, for years. So just, thank you for being South Dakota Midwest, smart, think, and common sense people.
It's always good to wash your hands, even when there isn't a new virus around.
Please do that. Please do that.
Next item, I would report to the Board of Education that I have been appointed to the Education Commission of the States by Governor Noem. I would note that it is a nonpartisan and unbiased education policy leadership group with the permission of our executive committee. It will be at no cost to the Brandon Valley School District. It does provide us a valuable resource as far as research-based best practices and policy practices. So I certainly am grateful for the opportunity to serve in that two-year appointment and appreciate Brandon Valley School District's support of providing professional leave on those two instances when the commission convenes. So thank you very much for the opportunity to do that. Booster Club video board update at our outdoor activity complex. I would let you know that the planning process continues. We have a meeting with Daktronics, Operations Manager Henshaw, Mr. Marso, the Booster Club on the timeline of that event and how that construction process looks, et cetera. As I previously reported, BVSD purchases the board, and the Booster Club reimburses at the same exact time. This is a common practice that we have utilized for other items. Also, it's a tax advantage for the Booster Club, that those dollars then are available to distribute to our kiddos in scholarships and those types of things. And then, as I previously mentioned, the Coke component of the Booster Club sponsorship will result in a contract between Coke and the school district, in addition to Coke and the Booster Club. And what I would say on that is, I hope to have that contract for board approval here at our next Board of Education meeting. Academic calendar, parent-teacher conferences are upcoming, March 16th and 17th. We will have parent-teacher conferences at those respective schools. The 19th school is in session, Friday, March 20th, no school for a comp day. Then we get into our spring break, April 9th, two-hour early dismissal, no school on the 10th, no school on the 13th. With that, I would certainly entertain any questions that you have.
Just wanted to make a quick comment for, congratulations for you being appointed to the commissioner on the policy leadership. That is something that should be acknowledged, and I also believe this is the first time somebody in academia, in practice, has been appointed. So I believe that is also something to be recognized, that you can bring a lot of immediate experience and a different perspective than has been on that board. So thank you for serving.
All right, Mr. Lombard, anything additional tonight? Okay, high school, Mr. Schleckaway?
Yeah. Is this working?
Yes.
Got it. Perfect. I just got a couple of quick head items. Busy at the high school right now. It's state basketball, both our girls' and boys' basketball teams qualified last weekend. And as administrators, I think sometimes it's harder on us to watch those games because all those kids are ours. And so, I even had to go grab Mr. Thorson out of, he tried to sneak away from the game because he just couldn't take it, so we got him back in there. But proud of both our boys' and girls' teams, and we hope all the Link's fans come out and support them, the 19th through the 21st. Tomorrow, we welcome Angela Keneke to the high school for an all-school assembly on Emily's Hope and her personal story and her personal journey. I've heard really good things about her talk, and I think it'll be very valuable information for our students and staff, so we're really excited for that. Lastly, Tuesday, March 24th, Dr. Larson and I get the opportunity to present at a special on the menu, which is an event through the Chamber of Commerce, and it's when we're kind of rolling out our paid internship program that we want to expand. We are going to have Dr. Larson, myself, speak, but I think the most important players are going to be the students that piloted it this year, along with some of our business partners that were on-board this year. And what I will say is, any business partner that was part of the pilot wants to be a part of it next year and expand, and we've been having conversations on a daily basis with other businesses that want to post jobs on our job board, too. So, more information to come on that, just really excited about where that's going. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Freckin, anything tonight? Okay, Mr. Thorson?
[inaudible]
Okay. Mrs. Nelson, same. Okay. Mr. Skipstead, anything tonight? Okay. Mr. Pearson?
[inaudible]
Mr. Bab? Ms. Foster?
[inaudible]
Mrs. Huffcamp? Mr. Horst?
[inaudible]
Mrs. Palmer? All right. Mrs. Nelson, anything tonight? Mr. Henshaw?
[inaudible]
Mr. Marso?
[inaudible]
Okay. All right. There is no board policy, so that takes us to our first item under general business to approve the preliminary 2020, 2021 capital outlay budget summary.
You guys had a detailed summary of the capital outlay in your packet, I'll just quickly go over some of the highlights and generalizations of the capital outlay budget. It's just about $6.2 million in total revenue will be coming, projected to be coming into the capital outlay fund, kind of a summary of where that money is being spent. As we've talked about in our five-year plans, $2.2 million will be going into our reserve fund to assist us to build an addition onto the high school in a couple of years. That's 35% of the total, $6.2 million. We have a transfer to the general fund of $900,000 for operation in the general fund, that's about 15% of the total budget, same amount as last year. $555,000 of debt service in the capital outlay fund, as we talked earlier in the five-year plan presentation, quite frankly, a minimal amount, 9%. Technology purchases in the budget amount to 15%, just under $1 million, $950,000. Transportation amounts to 7%, $410,000. Buildings and grounds improvements are $750,000, or 12%. And all the other line items, furnishings, textbooks, band instruments, print shop operations amount to about 7% of the total budget for $6,205,000. The actual detail, you can show or see the replacement and new technology, most of it next year is replacement technology, replacement of computers and the technology side of things rather than new purchases. Any questions?
No questions from Mr. Lombard at all? All right, hearing...
Safety things, those are just updates or...
Yeah, the elevator controls are...
You need to go to the microphone or have me answer it for you. Go to the mic.
Thanks.
Is it on?
Yep.
Elevator controls are just replacing the contactors that are currently in there with direct digital instead, so that's not necessarily as a safety item. The safety straps in the motors actually should be replaced on the Activity Center hoops in there. We've got a couple that broke, and when they break, we replace them, or when the motor fails, we replace them. Not necessarily a safety issue, but when they do break, we replace them, so it's a plan.
They were just replacing in advance or...
Yeah, that's what it is. It's replacing before they actually fail.
So we're not going to... Which will make...
Any other questions? If there are none, I would consider a motion to approve the preliminary 2020, 2021 capital outlay budget summary as presented, please. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next up, approve Sparta Elementary School construction, low base bid of $14,675,000 with total deducts of $520,519, resulting in the contract amount of $14,154,481.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As previously mentioned, low base bid, Pesca Construction, $14,675,000. You can see there that the value engineering deducts total $520,000 and change. I would note that the omissions that we worked through, the deduction of sunscreens on the exterior, cosmetic item, again, all of these deducts that the administration worked through were brought forward by the architects and deemed appropriate and acceptable deducts. The roofing insulation coverboard, basically that's a half-inch coverboard that they put on directly underneath the... put on directly underneath the, um, uh, the adhered rubber membrane, so that when you replace the, the roof in 30 or 40 years, you tear up that board as opposed to tearing up insulation, so it's purely a preventative item. They recommended, um, removing that, uh, the overhang on the classroom learning centers. So for example, um, they would, the, the learning centers have high windows in opposed to having a roof overhang, it's just a straight vertical structure like the middle school structure. Um, carpet manufacturer, just a change in, um, name brand. Uh, we went with a similar style, similar style backing, uh, product comparable, but that, but that change in manufacture reduct, uh, resulted in that $64,000 deduct. Um, a fabric, you can see a fabric color of acoustical wall panels. Uh, the best example I can give you of this is, uh, before we were gonna have black-black, and now we're just gonna have black, uh, is the best example I can give you of this $12,000 savings. Uh, and then the last item is, um, the geothermal system. We are omitting the geothermal system and moving to a system that is the same as what we currently have at the intermediate schools, so we still have, um, the efficiency value of ice storage and some of those things, but as opposed to utilizing the geothermal and all of the wells associated with it, we are moving to, um, just that natural gas system. The biggest reason for that is the payback on that is, was projected from the engineers at over 20 years, so they recommended not doing that because the payback time was too, uh, too long, too far out. So, we have $520,000 and change, total deducts, uh, contract amount will be $14,154,041, would recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Um, there's two items, number three and four, under consent approval. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
Oh, move. Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Personnel item, number one, approved recommendation for staff reduction.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just wanted to note the Title I staff reduction item that you will be acting on this evening. You can see the, uh, the graph in front of you outlines, uh, our current Title I tutor staff. Uh, Roxy Rauch previously tendered a resignation, or not a resignation, retirement notification, uh, so she's not included within the reduction with her retirement. Um, I would note that Julie Forbes and Merrick Grage are both the individuals that will continue on as our Title I tutors, and they will be the individuals that the $133,000 Title I allocation supports. Uh, the following individuals will receive the reduction in force, or staff reduction, Jody Lambert, Sarah Tiffany, Jana Kloth. Uh, and then, for the sake of understanding and transparency, I just wanted to make certain and note the order regarding Title I recall rights will be as follows. Uh, Jody Lambert, Sarah Tiffany, Jana Kloth, and then Jana Conrad, and the reason that I include, uh, the fourth individuals, because if you'll recall, we had a reduction in Title I funds last year, and we had to do a staff reduction with Jana Conrad, but in our contract it outlines that they have 16 months of recall rights. So realistically, in the event that, you know, you went down the list and you didn't get there, uh, Jana Conrad could still have recall rights if the other three individuals, um, declined the rights or, uh, didn't accept the position offered, the Title I position offered, and in the event that there is an opening. So, uh, with that, would certainly recommend approval of the staff reduction as presented.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve personnel items two through 15 as presented, please. So moved. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number 16 is there for information only. Under communication, there are no building permit applications. Under Board of Education, there are three thank you notes there from various employees. That takes us to our formal board reports. Um, does anyone have one of those they would like to share tonight?
I will start out with, uh, transportation. Um, over the last several months, we've been talking, uh, the, the committee as far as, um, what do we want the district to look like down the road as far as transportation. Um, there are several deciding factors that made us wanna tweak it somewhat. Um, the number of drivers and available drivers, and the number of riders is always increasing, and with that also bus routes are becoming more and more, I don't wanna say problematic, but it's an issue, okay? And so, um, what we basically have come up with is that we will, um, let me back up. There will be a point between now and maybe the end of the school year, that there will be a question and answer meeting, which parents can come and discuss the transportation, um, method that we're coming up with. So, long story short is, we have suggested that we are going to have, in real common word, zones, and in these zones, there are going to be certain specific areas where there will be pickups. So we don't have, an example, a bus having to go about 36 different stops. We're gonna have maybe three or four, and the kids come to those spots and then get on the bus, so we can be more efficient with the buses and, uh, the demand for buses being picked, uh, kids being picked up.
And that's in Brandon, proper, in the city limits.
That's in Brandon. And, um, so that's basically what we're looking at right now. Uh, I will ask, Renee was on the board as well, Jared, did I miss anything? Would you wanna...
The only other recommendation we have written down on our report is elimination of transportation eligibility for in-district open enrollment. So if a child open enrolls from Valley to Fred, they will have to find their way from the, their home in Valley's assigned area to Fred. There will no longer be any in-district open enrollment busing availability.
And I'll note, the, the reason for, uh, that, the elimination of eligibility for in-district open enrollment transportation is, that is where, we have approximately, I'm gonna say 80, between 80 and 100 kids that are in that situation. And the issue is, it results in transfers, in multiple transfers, and that's where students, um, get on the wrong bus, or miss the bus, and it creates timing issues for our transportation department, uh, very problematic. That's quite frankly, the biggest problem that we run into when we have, have timing issues, and we have misplaced students for brief periods of time deal with, dealing with the transfers. The centralized and established city limit bus stops item, I will just comment on that. Quite, quite frankly, I'll use, I'll use Valley Springs as an example. Uh, in our review of our system, uh, we had over 36 different stops in the community of Valley Springs for buses. So what we're looking at doing is creating more centralized stops where you would have six stops, and then the kids would come to that stop. It increases our efficiency and our ability, uh, to transport kids in what I would say is a more timely manner, um, ultimately improving our transportation sustainability as we, as we grow. Multiple forms of communication will be utilized to gather feedback and answer questions prior to the '21 school year. We'll, uh, we'll put out an informational, an informational, uh, email, we've talked about creating a video that would outline, video presentation that would outline, uh, the changes so folks are aware of what's coming, uh, and then also holding an open house-like meeting where we can have question and answer with parents who may ask a specific question. So, um, again, transportation is a, uh, significant program within our school district, transport over 2,300 some odd students. We have, as, uh, Business Manager Lundberg commented earlier, driver shortage challenges and some of those things, and, um, the centralized and established city limit bus stops are gonna be important as we create a sustainable system moving forward. So, uh, more information to come, and we'll, uh, we'll update you accordingly.
And we went through, as part of the transportation committee, I think both Mr. Odie and I would say, we went through every possible scenario, good, bad, or otherwise, that we could possibly come up with, and strategized about this over multiple months. So none of this was taken lightly, um, but we have to understand, too, like Superintendent Larson and Mr. Odie both said, it's sustainability of the program, plus we're bringing on another elementary school. So, we have to look out for the long-term and the long haul, and bottom-line safety for the kids. So, if you have any questions, you can let us know, otherwise, I would wait for the official forms of communication to come out.
Is it accurate to report out that Brandon Valley, being one of the largest school districts in the state, in number of children, is also one of the larger in square miles to cover? Um, so, and also, not all school districts in the state of South Dakota offer district-wide busing, correct? So I think it, just for those, some things for us to remember, as we have continued to try to provide busing for not only the number of students, but also the number of square miles in our district, um, has been an incredible, I would say, luxury, I think, for a school district, being somebody who lives out in the country. Um, I think that's something for us all to keep in mind, and I appreciate the effort that you all have put forth to look at different options, um, for us, um, and I appreciate, I think you, you have addressed that there's gonna be several ways to communicate how we're gonna move forward, um, but in the meantime, for, as this is going to be starting to bubble out in the community, um, and I'm sure this puts a lot of, I would say probably anxiety on a few parents of figuring out how to get their children back and forth to schools, um, and I'm sure there's probably a lot of different ideas, I think, to put to rest that there have been a lot of ideas that have pushed across the table, and try to figure out what, what works best. Um, we're all doing this the best that we can for the students, because we wanna get them to school safely and on time, um, but we only have so many resources to do so. So thank you for what you're doing, and, um, if you could just sit tight, uh, to ask your questions or to give us your ideas until we have some of these open houses, I think that would be ideal, not that we won't listen ahead of time, and I would say maybe not bombard all of the school principals unless you guys want, but if you could just wait.
[inaudible]
Yeah, we'll wait, and we'll, we'll have our informational meetings, uh, coming soon.
And I, I wanna thank you, Mrs. Saxer, for saying that, because you just brought up something that I think a lot of people forget, is that within the boundary issues, there is a South Dakota law that says you only have to bus children that are greater than five miles outside their attendance center. So when she uses the word luxury, it really has been a luxury. So, this is the time where you put your thinking caps on, think outside the box, how can we carpool, how can kids go together, how can we encourage walking, riding our bikes, I mean, different things, but at the same time, know that the decisions that were made were about safety, efficiency, and sustainability. And I would really appreciate waiting until the information comes out, like Mrs. Saxer said, before we get all anxious about it.
And I'm not talking too much about bus passes, but I, I'd like the, just the general public to know that this is, uh, a bus pass is almost like an insurance policy where you're guaranteeing your kid's safety as much as we can to get your kids to school and back home again, so, um, just keep that in your mind as well.
And thank you to everybody who drives a bus, thank you. You've done a fantastic job, so everybody at the bus barn, everybody, thank you so much for what you do, and everybody at the schools for getting people on and off the bus. Thank you.
And for those of you who want a CDO, as long as you pass the cough test and wash your hands, you can probably get one. Encourage, if you've got nothing else to do, please consider it.
I'll give a quick report on the curriculum committee meeting we had earlier this evening. So the Passion Project pilot wrapped up, and based on feedback and survey results, um, is a very successful thing, so I think that'll be coming back next year. Um, so that was good. Um, on a, on a, on a different topic, I just wanna inform the board, um, quick tonight, that, uh, my family and I are gonna be moving to Minnesota this summer, so we accepted teaching positions in Minnesota, so we'll obviously be here through the school year, and then in the summer-ish, somewhere in that, um, time period, we'll be making the move. So I intend to stand on board until I actually do physically move to Minnesota, and then, at that point, I will vacate my seat. So I just wanna let you know that. Um, yeah, pretty, pretty straightforward. Sorry, I didn't make my six-year limit, Paul.
Well, just from my perspective, I'm sorry to see you go, and we don't really want you to leave, but we have to make decisions that are best, and so we wish you all the best, and, but we're glad you're gonna stick around for quite a while yet, so, we need you. Anybody else have anything else on their committees that they would like to report?
I think just adding to the curriculum, um, meeting is just reminding you that, uh, just around the corner, it's gonna come faster than we're ready for, is, um, our state testing for all of our kiddos. So, um, just ahead of time, thank you to all of our teachers that were already starting to get our kids ready, um, and just a reminder to our parents that a good night's sleep and a great breakfast is always best. I know I got the reminder, so thank you to the district for sending that reminder out, but again, thank you to the teachers for getting our kids in the mindset and learning how to get their fingers ready for those computerized tests, so thank you so much.
All right. Uh, thank you. There's a, a travel report there for your review if you'd like, otherwise, that takes us to the end of our, um, agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.